Called order, the Monday, January 4th, 2016, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. And to start the new year off for us will be invocation will be by Reverend Walter Gallup, Air Force Chaplain retired, and at the conclusion, he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gallup.
Thank you, and a happy new year to each of you. I offer this prayer. We stand before you, our Lord and our Maker, as we now enter a new year. Help us each to be instruments of peace in a world boiling over with un-anarchy, terror, hatred, and misunderstanding. Give us the patience of Job, and let us be peacemakers. Blessed are the peacemakers. When we are in danger of losing our vision in our community, and losing our dreams, and losing our young people, and our joy of life, make us joyful with faith. Open our minds and our willing hands and our hearts to protect our families, protect our neighbors, and practice forgiveness. And in doing this, may we have the wisdom of Solomon. Enable our county and our elected officials, our churches, our schools, and each of our citizens to take a fresh look at the issues and problems we have to face and solve this coming year. Teach us to be understanding of those who differ and disagree with us, and fill us with a gentle spirit. Give each of us in this room, oh Lord, an opportunity today and tomorrow to be a good Samaritan and help the weak, even when it is not convenient. It is in giving that we receive. It is in forgiving that we are forgiven. It is in serving others that we show our love and compassion. Hear our prayer, oh Lord, and walk with us as we begin a new journey today. This is our prayer through God our Father. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Gallup for those thoughtful words for the new year. And next, next order of business will the approval, is the approval of the agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Um, Mr. Woody, did you say that item A was being removed until?
Public hearing, item A, has, has been requested for continuance. But I think we should do that at that point on the agenda.
Okay. Just one second. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, the approval of the agenda is passed. Next is administrative reports, resolution of the Alamo Regional Solid Waste Authority, admitting Washington County as a member of the authority. I think that is Mr. Scanlon's.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Idlet serves on the Alamo Regional Solid Waste Authority as the Currituck County voting member. The authority is a seven-county authority, most of the counties in northeastern North Carolina, along with just about all the towns and cities in those counties, came together years ago in, in a desire to see if we pooled together the total tonnage of solid waste generated each county that we could get better bargaining, better pricing in landfill disposal, hauling, and the overall just, just disposal of solid waste. And that formed the solid, the Alamo Regional Solid Waste Authority. Washington County was not a member of the authority, and they have now approached the authority and requested that they be able to join. The staff of the Alamo Solid Waste Authority reviewed the application, reviewed the statistics and the data from Washington County. They made a recommendation to the authority to admit Washington County. The authority itself has voted to allow Washington County to be admitted. And what you have tonight is being sensed, the authority exists because the, the member counties have approved a document creating and establishing that. What you have tonight on your agenda is an amendment to that document that each county has to execute, accepting Washington County as a member into the authority. You have a resolution that speaks to Washington County wanting to join. They do have to pay because we have been in existence for some time now. There is a financial reserve that had been established. Washington County has to pay a proportionate share into it. So you see in the resolution, a buy-in dollar amount that they will have to commit to the authority before they can become full members. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
I'll just add that this has been an ongoing thing for, excuse me. I'll just add that this has been an ongoing process now for a year or so. I served as chair of that, that group half for the last three years, I believe. And it's, it's been a work in progress, and we all see it as a good thing. It'll, it'll allow more volume, but it'll also spread out expenses a little bit more, which gives a better deal for everybody. And I believe, Dan, what was the, there's another county or city that's, that's interested in, that's coming up next?
There, there is a county, can't remember who it was, saved my life. I'm thinking it might have been Hurtford, but I'm not positive, that is starting to go through the same process now. And so hopefully, if that goes well in a couple of months, we'll bring you another amendment. Because again, as a, a, a original member, we have to basically change the amend the charter to add these additional members, and that's what you're asked to do tonight.
Yeah, and when we, they changed the charter to make it to where it didn't have to be redone again if somebody else come in, they just went ahead and redone the whole process. That's the reason that we have to adopt it tonight. I've got a piece here that I've signed, and it's got to be sent back along with it as well, as, as the chair of the group too. So anyhow, we, we, 100% endorsed it from the, the board membership, so whatever action this board would like to take would be.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept a resolution.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marion Gilbert, and a second by Vice Chairman Idlet. I will ask for a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The ayes have it, it's passed. Next administrative report will be to release an overview for revised flood maps. Mr. Woody, I believe you're gonna have the honors of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Currituck County recently received news that revised flood maps were made available for our county. This is a process that's supposed to occur every five years, I believe. It usually, it usually doesn't. The, the, usually the process is slower than that. But we do have new flood maps out, and I'm gonna show you tonight, you and the public, how to access that information. But before I do that, I want to give a little rundown of some of the, the facts associated with our new flood maps. One is that base flood elevations are generally decreasing throughout the county. So what that means is that if you're in a flood zone and your base flood elevation is 10, then you've gotta build the lowest floor, the lowest livable area of your house at 10 feet above sea level. And a lot of properties in the county, that, that number's gonna decrease, which means you could actually build your house, or in addition, a little bit lower. Where the base flood elevations are increasing, which is only about 1% of the land area of the county, so very, very few places are seeing an increase in the base flood elevation, it's about 1 to 2 feet. And then also, one thing that's interesting, there's an overall reduction to V-zone areas. And for those that don't know, V stands for velocity. Those are flood zones that are, that are subject or prone to wave velocity. So most frequently, you'll see those on V-zones on oceanfront properties. Actually have some V-zones on soundfront properties. Folks don't realize that, but there's a few of those in the county. That area is reducing overall. When the staff looked at the, the data available, about 6,000 buildings are proposed to be removed from the special flood hazard area. That's out of about 20,000 buildings that are listed in the county as being in the flood zone. So that's a very significant number. Again, that's about 30% of the buildings that are currently shown in the flood zones will no longer be that once these new maps become effective. About 5,200 of that number are in the AE zone, and then the other 900 in the V-zone, which I just described. Additionally, about 50 buildings are gonna be subject to a base flood elevation increase. That means your flood, the base flood elevation on your property will increase for your building, which could be problematic. But on the other hand, 2,400 buildings are subject to a base flood elevation decrease. So in total, you have about 6,000 buildings that come out of the flood zone, and you have about another 2,500 that are gonna have a base flood elevation decrease. So on the whole, I would say the flood maps are probably a positive, certainly from an insurance standpoint, if, if you're carrying flood insurance. One thing I would caution the public, that's important to know, is, is about a little over 20% of claims for flood damage are, are occur in properties that are not mapped in flood zones. So 1 in 5 flood claims are on a property not mapped in a flood zone. So please, as you consider this information, as a homeowner, just because you're mapped out of the flood area, particularly if you're, for example, an oceanfront lot, doesn't mean you necessarily don't wanna carry insurance. You wanna consider that carefully, and a lot of times, when your risk goes down, so if your base flood elevation decreases, or you're out of the flood zone, you can get a, a better rate on your flood insurance because you have less risk. So something to keep in mind as you, as you look through this information, and evaluate what you're, what you're to do as a homeowner. The maps themselves are actually available to view now, so you can go see what's your property. I'm gonna show you how to do that in a second, what your property will look like under the new flood maps. The way this works is the, once the flood maps are placed on the federal register, a 90-day appeal period begins. They have not been placed on the register yet, but we expect in April or May, they'll probably be put on the register. At that point, the Department of Public Safety will come to the county and hold open-house meetings for the public to answer questions, to explain any, any concerns with the new flood maps. After, after those meetings occur, and that 90-day window closes, at that point, the flood maps will then become effective. I don't know the specific date of when that 90-day appeal period begins, but as soon as the county has that information, we will obviously get that out to the public so they're aware of that. But certainly don't expect that, that appeal period to begin before April or May, so that leaves a lot of time for the public and the board to have a chance to look at this information and evaluate it.
Ben, one question.
Yes, sir.
You say the Department of Public Safety will come and hold a series of hearings or public comment meetings?
Public meetings, yes.
Who is Department of Public Safety?
That is, that is a, that's the Department of the State of North Carolina. Yeah, the State of North Carolina is ma, I'm sorry, I said, the State of North Carolina manages the flood mapping program here in North Carolina, and they will, they will coordinate and hold these public meetings. And at the end of this presentation, I'm gonna give local staff contact, so rather than wait until April for the state to come, you're certainly welcome to call your planning staff, and we'll answer any questions we can in the meantime.
Thank you.
So the maps, so if you go to Currituck County's website, and I'll give you the web link at the end of this presentation, but if you go to the county's website, on the front page, you'll see a latest news item that links you or will send you to the flood map information. So from the Currituck County's main website, you can click on a link that says flood map information, and it will send you to this page that you see in the screenshot. And the first thing you'll do is obviously you'll click North Carolina. Once you've done that, this window will pop up, that it asks you to enter your address. I find that doesn't always work that well. And a lot of times, when you enter your address, it won't zoom you down to your parcel, but it will take you to the flood panel in which your property is located. So what you're really gonna have to do is probably enter your address, or click on Currituck County, and then zoom in to where your property is. So again, it's gonna take some work on your end to know where your property is on the map. And if you have a question, or you can't do that, you can always contact county staff to help you through that.
Mr. Woody, will, when you say enter our address, will that be our, like mailing address, or will that be the description of the property, lot?
It'll be your property address. So for example, well, I won't give any addresses here over the, over the television, but for example, put in your property address, and it should, it should zoom in close proximity to that. Once you do that, you'll, you'll zoom in, again, not down to your parcel specifically, but you'll start to get into, to a aerial photograph of your neighborhood, or the area in which you live. And the first thing you'll do, and this is very important, because I've had a number of people haven't done this, and I, I didn't do this at first, but in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, there's a little box that says effective. By default, this, this mapping program shows the current flood maps. So when you, when you first open this, you're looking at your flood zone today, and you're gonna open this and say, well, the guy just said there's 6,000 properties not in the flood zone, but I don't see that. Make sure you change that box from effective to preliminary. Do that, that's an important, I would think these boxes, or these maps would default to the new flood maps, but they don't. So make sure you do that. Once you've switched that to preliminary, you'll see the new flood maps. Over on the upper left-hand corner, you can see a series of tools and ways to use the mapping software. If, if you're used to the county's GS system, this will be pretty easy for you. But what you're essentially gonna do is you're gonna click on the layers button, and a little, a box will come up on your left side of your screen, and from that box, you can control what you're looking at. It actually defaults, once you change effective to preliminary, it defaults to what the proposed flood zones are. So from that point, you really don't need to change any of the layers necessarily, but you can. And once you do this, if you zoom in to the properties, anything that's blue is an AE or a VE flood zone. Anything that's yellow is a shaded X. And a shaded X is typically a very low chance of flooding, and sometimes you're not required to, to carry flood insurance when you're in a shaded X, although it's recommended. But when you zoom in and you see the blue areas, those are the new flood zones, and within those blue areas, you can see if it's AE or VE, and the elevation associated with it. So if you look at your house and it's blue, you may see that it's now AE 5, which is a flood zone with a base flood elevation of 5. Perhaps you go back to the old maps, or the current maps, I should say, and you may see an AE 7. So you would then know that your base flood elevation dropped by 2 feet. Or better yet, if your property is in the blue on the current maps, and on the new ones, it has no color, it means you are now not in a flood zone, or you will not be located in a flood zone when the maps are effective. But the important thing to know is that if you have questions, or if the technology seems like something you're not able to, you're not comfortable using, or not able to navigate, you can contact these two staff people you see on the screen. If you live on the mainland and you have a flood question, you can contact Jason Littrell. You can see his phone number and email address on the screen, and I'm sure this information can be posted on the website following this meeting. Additionally, if you live on the Outer Banks and you have a question about the flood maps, please contact Jenny Turner. And again, her phone number and direct email address are on the screen. And of course, you can see the website. If you prefer not to navigate to the website, to the flood maps, to the county's website, you can enter this address directly into your web browser, and go to the website that way. And I can answer any questions the board has at this time.
Just, just one. Okay, you, you say if the base flood elevation goes from 7 to 5, realistically, what does that mean for someone who's getting ready to build a house there?
It means that given the grade of your property, if you build on crawl space, or if you build your house pile-supported, you likely can build it closer to the ground than you otherwise could. One of the, probably the positive impacts as a, as a building a house is, it will, if you wanted to build a three-story house, you would have more ability to do that with a lower base flood elevation. If you had an existing house that was in a flood zone, the base flood decreases, it may allow you to build in addition a little lower to the ground. So it just gives you a little more flexibility in terms of your architecture of the house you're gonna build.
And by doing that, if you, if you build it above that base flood level, don't that have some impact on whether you, your flood insurance or?
It, it does. A flood insurance is, is risk-based insurance, so if you're willing to build higher than the base flood elevation, then I, I think that can be a positive towards your insurance rates. Or if you're removed from a flood zone, and you're willing to continue carrying flood insurance, you should be able to get a reduced rate on that as well.
Thank you.
And Mr. Idlet, it also helps the mechanical contractors, so they don't have to put that convention unit so high up, and you need a ladder to work on it, so.
Right, yeah. Okay. There were some benefits to it, and I was just trying to.
I think the ultimate benefit, and Ben, you've already covered it, is that notwithstanding, it would, anybody in the audience that has flood insurance, it would, and everybody's individual circumstances are different, but it would probably behoove you to look at the new flood maps, because even if you elect to continue to have flood insurance, which is probably prudent, it certainly should have an impact that will lower your rates, and, and maybe, for some people significantly, if you are one of the majority that's affected by this change. So anybody that has an opportunity and has flood insurance, they should do that. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. Dan, we don't need any action to take, this was just a presentation to, to us. So with that, we'll move on to public hearing. The first item is public hearing in action, PB 8411, Corolla Light Phase 3, request to amend the approved sketch plan, master plan, and use permit to allow construction of a standalone restaurant and six two-bedroom apartment units within the Corolla Light Phase 3, which is located at the Corolla Light Town Center. This property is located at 1159 Austin Street, Corolla, Tax Map 115B, Parcel 2, P as in Paul, 2, B as in boy, Poplar Branch, OBX Township. Prior to the meeting, I was surprised that the applicant has requested that this be deferred until a later meeting. And based on that, I will make a motion to defer this item until the February 1st, 2016 regularly scheduled meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
We have a motion by my, by myself, and a second by Commissioner Gilbert. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next public hearing in action is PB 15-20, Spruell Sand Mine, request a use permit for an extractive industry, in this case, a sand mine, at an existing mine, that's replaced an expired use permit located in Moayok at 913 Keratoke Highway, Tax Map 15, Parcel 31 and 32B in Moayok Township. Inasmuch as this is a use permit, it requires any of the interested parties that wish to speak to this matter to come forward at this time and be sworn. Not sworn at, but sworn in. Okay. Do you, and each of you swear that the testimony you give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
I do consider yourself sworn. You can have a, a seat until you're called. This is, uh, will be for Mr. Woody to begin. And we will open, open the public hearing with Mr. Woody's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a use permit at the Spruell Sand Mine, which is located in the Moayok area. You're probably relatively familiar with this property as it was before you, in January of 2015, for a use permit renewal. At that time, what the Board of Commissioners required, and the ordinance now requires, is that use permits for mining operations have the same term or timeframe as the state permit. So the reason this is before you again, one year later, is because the state permit for this mining operation subsequently expired, which they have renewed their state permit, and they are now before the Board of Commissioners to renew the local county use permit to run concurrently with the state permit. And that was, that was done by the board to, to ensure that these permits don't fall through the cracks. So when applicants and landowners are renewing the state permit, they know then to also renew the county's use permit. The property's limited service in the land use plan, it's currently zoned heavy industrial. Not a lot of changes from what you've seen before on, on this property. The one thing I'll note is that previously, when, when the board heard this request, the mine had been excavated by more than 30%, which is the maximum allowed, under our county unified development ordinance. It was actually over-excavated by 5.6 acres. Part of that approval for this mine in January of last year was for the honor to refill the hole, or to basically begin a reclamation plan of putting dirt back into the areas that were over-excavated. Initially, as the board is aware, they were behind schedule on that. However, the last quarterly report submitted to the county, they are now back on schedule with their fill deficit resolution plan. And so the, the permit now is, is operating as was required in the original approval in January, and it's before you again tonight for, for an extension or renewal of that permit. The one thing that's different is they are requesting a 50% setback reduction along property lines, where existing vegetation is in place, which is pretty typical for mines. And what that means is generally, the mine has a 100-foot setback from adjoining property lines. However, if there is a wooded or existing buffer in place where, where the, the mining operation is opaquely screened from adjoining properties, that setback can be reduced to 50 feet. They are requiring, requesting that on one of the property lines. In your packet, you can see the, the proposed or recommended staff findings for the use permit. The TRC has reviewed this request and does recommend approval. One of the issues that was discussed at the TRC was the idea of whether or not the mine operator would perform a hydro-geological report, or provide performance guarantees for mines within 1,500 feet. We have subsequently identified, or the applicant identified two mines that are located within 1,500 feet of this mining operation. Since the mine dewatered, they are proposing to provide a performance guarantee for the replacement of those wells, if in fact, they're impacted by the dewatering operations of the mine. I'll note, this mine's been in, really been in business since 1999, and is dewatered, and the county has not received complaints in terms of, of damage or any issues with surrounding in-use wells. Additionally, in the TRC recommendation, there's a couple of site plan corrections that are recommended. Planning board heard this request at their December meeting, and they also recommended approval with the staff conditions. That concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions the board has.
Mr. Woody.
Yes, sir.
Does the county mining ordinance actually allow for up to 50%?
It, it does, in, in certain circumstances, that's correct.
So he could come back in the future and ask, request the additional 20%?
One of the keys, one of the caveats for that increase in excavation areas, that you have to operate the permit free of any violations for a period of five years. They'd have to operate in full compliance for five years.
My ask that is, he's some percentage over the 30%, but less than the 50%. Could, could he not apply to amend his mine permit to take in account the amount that he's over, and address the issue of the overmining? Do you understand what I'm asking you?
I do, he, he could. I mean, there, there is a means or a manner in which he can have the 35% excavation. The challenge is with the current ordinance, is he's gotta operate the mine without any violations, I think for a period of five years. So to this point, he, he wouldn't have that, he has not achieved that yet.
Okay. I was just thinking about the, the overmining, is, I believe that is the violation that we're discussing, isn't it?
It, it's the primary violation at the property, yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just thinking out loud, that's all as a means of addressing all of it and being done with it.
Well, and, and that's interesting, because you point out initially, that was the limit on it, and I think since I've been on the board, it was increased to allow 50%. I think that's what you're talking about, the increase up to 50% of the property, which apparently, if that had been in place at the time, this would have precluded this having been an, meaning an issue. So we subsequently changed that to increase it to 50%, but he at the time was in, fell under to 30%, that's, that's my understanding.
But I don't think we increased. But I don't think we increased his mine to 50 percent.
And we may not have.
We haven't increased his mine beyond the original 30 percent, have we? We have? We have not.
You have not.
So, that's what I'm saying, is there's a means to get within what he's supposedly in violation of that would address all that issue going forward.
That's an excellent point.
So that's, that's my point. But Mr. Woody feels that the violation is, would prohibit that from going forward. I would just submit that the violation is within that 50 percent. So that's all I'm trying to say.
Okay.
And I don't want to get in the weeds and stop this from going tonight. I'm just saying that's a way of addressing.
Understand.
The violation.
Understand. So subsequent to this meeting, if the applicant wants to bring that up and follow through with staff, I suggest you do that to see if there's a remedy for the condition you find yourself now under, if you so desire. Any other comments or questions?
So, so I guess what I'm hearing, that, that if he did that, then we would, I guess then we would be considering throwing out the violation, is what you're saying, and excusing that violation, if he does the 50 percent. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, and now we're starting to get in the weeds. I think, I think what Ben had said is the overage would fall under the increased 50 percent that was allowed in subsequent Board action. There may have been other violations outside of that particular instance that would have an impact on this. I'm just, the way you worded it, that's, that's what, that's what I took.
I don't think the, the permit right now, or the property's eligible for the increase beyond 30 percent. But what the sta, and I'm not prepared, wasn't prepared for that question tonight, but what I can do is, pending tonight, if the permit is approved tonight, renewed, then what I can do is staff can evaluate that, and perhaps provide the applicant and the Board with some information about where the deficiency is, and what needs to happen to allow the expansion. And I certainly can do that as a follow-up measure to tonight's meeting.
And that's what I was suggesting to the applicant, is to follow up with inquiries with staff to see if that's an avenue that would be something you'd be wanting to pursue. Any other questions or comments?
I'm kind of confusing myself now. So in essence, whatever action we take tonight, we're not violating.
We're just renewing the current mine as it sits.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And, and the reclamation is still going on. The point I was making is, the ordinance allows him to expand his mine to where that would have taken care of the reclamation problem that we're having.
You're looking at curing the problem.
Which is a, a decision for another time.
Okay. I wasn't following where you were coming from. I was just trying to put it together.
Yeah, it's a separate issue. It's, what's before us is this, and to allow continuation, I believe this is bringing the county permits in line with the state permits.
Yeah.
Which is something we also, in that last change, required that we get the state and the county permits tracking at the same time, to make it easier for both the applicant and the operator of the site, as well as the county, to maintain oversight and review.
Thank you.
And just one more question. Mr. Woody, you did say that they're on track now with the, the fill?
That, yes, sir, they are.
Okay, if there's no, if there's no more questions from the Board, I would ask the applicant and/or his representative to come forward. And if you would, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Wayne Leary, 757 Shawboro Road, Shawboro. And I represent Mr. Spurle, and have since his mine was initially approved by the county back in 98, I believe, 98, 99. And we concur with the findings of the staff. And I just gave you a report on some of the reclamation. We were, I'll just give you a little history on, on the reclamation. Where Mr. Spurle asked me to help him to do, have the ordinance changed so that a pit could be reclaimed back to the original elevation sometime back. And it was done, the county approved that. And he has been doing it, reclaiming this pit for a number of years. But he is on schedule, and I like to report today that he had 180 loads brought in, even though the weather has been anything but favorable recently. So we're on track, and we, I must admit, when the state mining permit was applied for back about five years ago, it was oversight on my part, and not doing the county, county permit, renewing it at that time. Although I did come and talk with one of the county planners, who is no longer with the county, about the state renewal, and we just, it was just oversight on both of our parts, that we didn't apply for a renewal, which led to the violations that we've just been discussed. But that's not an issue for the night. We're, we're planning to continue on and meet the minimum requirements and perhaps exceed it. Our goal would be to exceed it, if there's material, clean material that's coming back from sites, like now, now we've got material coming back from a large apartment complex in Norfolk. So it's, it's definitely an exercise that impacts the county's economic base and jobs and expenditures or fuel, whatever. But it ain't, maybe the best thing for me to do is ask, do you have any questions of us?
Any questions of the Board, of applicant, or applicant's representative? All right, here, hearing none. That's the only, Mr. Leary was the only individual that has signed up to speak to this matter. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the use permit to continue the mining operation.
Second, Pat.
We have a motion from Commissioner Beaumont, a second from Commissioner Hall. Any discussion? I mean, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I was going to slight you.
Too many mics.
Yeah, too many mics, too many pause. All right, we have a proper motion and a second, and no discussion. And hearing none, I will ask, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks very much.
All right, the next item we have on the agenda is Public Hearing in Action for PB 15-13, Currituck County Solar Arrays. This is a request to amend Chapter Four Use Standards to offer a setback reduction with additional landscape standards for solar arrays, requiring conditional zoning for the use, and only allow the use in the agricultural zoning district. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a follow-up to an amendment that was adopted by the Board at their October 5th, 2015 meeting. At that meeting, the Board of Commissioners took the solar array use in the ordinance, and added a 300-foot setback from exterior property lines, added the requirement for groundwater monitoring associated with solar arrays, and then added the performance guarantee requirements for decommissioning. Since that meeting, there's been some discussion about a modification to the 300-foot setback requirement. And following a work session, staff has put together an amendment that I think reflects the feedback that staff received. So what this amendment does is, right now, for a solar farm or solar array, the panels, equipment, and associated security fencing has to be located 300 feet from any perimeter, or from any exterior property line. What this amendment does is it establishes a 300-foot setback from property lines abutting a residential dwelling, residential zoning district, religious institution, public school, daycare center, public playground, public pool, public park. And if the solar array is adjacent to any of those uses or zoning districts, they have to provide a 300-foot setback, as well as a type D buffer. A type D landscape buffer is the densest buffer the county requires, so it's essentially an opaque buffer. However, if the solar array is adjacent to something that's not one of the things I just mentioned, so that would be a right-of-way, that could be a farm, or something zoned agricultural, could be an industrial use, so anything I didn't mention, if you're, if the solar farm's adjoining one of those uses, the setback can be reduced to 100 feet, and the buffer can be reduced to a type C buffer, which is more of a semi-opaque buffer. That's what this, this amendment effectively does, is it modifies the setbacks and adds the landscaping, and that's based on what the adjoining use or zoning is. The other part of this amendment that's before you is, right now, the solar arrays are, they're allowed in the ag district, the general business, limited business, light industrial, heavy industrial, and our planned developments with the use permit. What this amendment does, it removes, the solar array is a use from all those districts except for the agricultural district, and then it requires in the agricultural district a conditional zoning approval. The Board knows the difference in the use permit is that that's a permit that's issued based on compliance with the UDO, of making certain findings a fact, whereas the conditional zoning approval is a legislative matter that provides some discretion to the Board of Commissioners outside of having to make the required planned consistency finding. So that, again, that modifies the approval process and reduces the number of zoning districts that are made available. The Planning Board heard this request at their December meeting, and they did recommend approval. That concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions the Board has.
Any questions? Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. I have no one that has signed up. Is there, there is someone that, sir, if you will.
I'm sorry.
Sir?
I came in late, I'm sorry.
All right, well.
It's not directly, but it's about the berm.
You're going to have to come to the berm, and you're going to have to be sworn.
This is a legislative matter, not requiring sworn testimony, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Could I get your name and address for the record?
Warren Welges. I'm at 330 Oxford Road. I tried to get some questions answered about this berm situation, and to no avail. I talked to Tammy in the Planning Department, and tried to get ahold of my representative, and didn't receive any phone calls back. Initially, when we, y'all voted on the solar farm over in Wildwood, we were told as, over in the Wildwood section, that we were going to have a berm put up. And then it was going to have trees on top of it, and this was going to be erected immediately before construction was going to be started. So that we didn't have, and then it would have a chance for the trees to grow, and then at that rate, we wouldn't be looking at the construction and the, the solar panels going back and forth. Well, what I've been told by the foreman out on the site, is as close as I can get to an answer, is we're going to have a 12-foot fence put up. And then by Tammy, she said, by the contract that was okayed by y'all, is that there's three different, different contingencies in the contract, so that the contractor can make his determination on whatever he wants to put up. And one's a fence, and one's a berm with the trees. And I didn't, I was so, she never did get around to telling me what the third one was, which, at the public hearing, none of this was brought up besides the berm. And I've talked to several of the neighbors in, in our section, no, no one else, you know. And they were very upset about it, because they said, hey, we read this in the newspaper and all, too. It was put in the, and this was the only thing that was brought up, that we were going to have the berm. And, well, you know, previous also was that they were going to start it immediately, and, you know, which wasn't done either. The, they started farming the land, and did a whole crop rotation, and then they decide, you know, so they could make more money off the land. And then, then they start, then they went on and did the solar farm, which wasn't part of the contingency, which I talked to one of the representatives about, Paul, I talked to him on it, and I told him that they were planting crops out there and harvesting them, and all. And so, it just seems to me that what we were told in that meeting that night by Duke Engineering, I mean, Duke Energy and all, wasn't up and up. And I didn't know if everything was brought to y'all's attention or not. And we're very upset about the berm. And we're sitting there looking at the construction, and the lights are coming, are directed straight at our homes. They're not turned around, and, you know, the opposite way, so that they're shooting back into the woods or anything to boot. And, you know, they're all focused at Wildwood, and then all the equipment and everything's out there. And I wanted to know if we're going to get a berm or not, or are we being misled to the point, we were, I mean, we weren't very happy with having the solar farm. But then when we were told that we were going to get the berm, and we wouldn't be able to have to look at this, you know, was, we were going to live with it, and now we're not getting the berm, because the berm's not there, and all the construction's going on. And Paul O'Neil over here shaking his head, said, yes, you're going to get the berm. But everybody else is looking at me like, oh. So what's going on?
I very well remember what you're saying about the berm, very much. So, and they even put in a, from my recollection.
The Daily Advance had it in the paper.
They even put in a test berm, did they not, right there?
Yes, sir.
Build a.
Right out in the middle.
To show kind of what it was going to look like?
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm a.
But.
Mr. Chairman.
Why were there three recommendations put into the contract and okayed by y'all?
Mr. Chairman. Well, moment, I guess.
We have two issues going on here. We have an already approved special use permit.
That's right.
And we have an amendment to the ordinance. We need to address the amendment to the ordinance, or address the special use permit, but we're mixing two flavors of Jell-O here together. We need to address one at a time. I would request the Chair would.
Call the question?
Call the question, let us address the.
Okay. I didn't know if it would, I didn't know if we're mixing donuts and apples, or, or.
Are, but you're, you're, you're fine.
Okay, I didn't know. I didn't want to rock the boat, but on the same note, if it was going to make a difference with this decision, I wanted to bring it up at this time, instead of on the tail end. And then say, hey, Mr. Welges, why didn't you bring this up? So I was just going to run my gums.
So he's offering this as testimony towards the one that we're actually, I assume that's what he's doing.
Sort of, you know.
Okay. So, so while it's, it's not really germane to the matter that's before.
Yes, sir.
Us. It's a concern relative to an ongoing, already approved special use permit, but it's not germane to the issue before us. So the question's been called, which means we move forward on this, and.
Yes, sir.
Pass or deny the amendment.
Okay.
As, as.
I just wanted to bring it to y'all's attention, that what we've heard, and what we've been told by Tammy, which she's supposed to be the guru in planning over the.
He's close.
The Wildwood, and supposedly, y'all agreed on three different contingencies on the berms. And it kind of seems, kind of strange that the Commissioners okayed and let them get, give the leniency to get, whatever was cheaper for them, and what looked better for them.
We're, we're still continuing to air, air your grievances relative to this. I would suggest that after the meeting and/or later time, you bring this up with Ben to address the questions that you have. Mr. Woody?
Oh, Woody.
And to.
Where'd Ben come from?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we dispense with this item, and then let staff answer it, because the public has got the same questions. You're not the only one that has that question.
Yes, sir.
If you would indulge that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We can do that as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, any other comments? All right, any other comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any discussion from the commissioners? Hearing none, chair will accept the motion in PB 15-13, Currituck County Solar Arrays.
Move forward, approval as presented.
I second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner O'Neill, second by Commissioner Beaumont. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Now, this matter is resolved if...
I think Mr. McCree or Mr. Woody could, could address his questions.
I could try to address some of the points. When the Wildwood project came forward during the testimony of the use permit, the applicant did show a picture and discussed putting a row of shrubs on top of a berm. I'll note that during, during that public hearing, that was not added as a condition of the approval in the use permit during, during the motion that was made. However, what the staff did is, we followed up with the applicant, and obviously made, made the point that they presented that as testimony in support of their use permit for the Wildwood project, and they agreed that, yes, we are going to landscape the panels and maintain the 300-foot setback. And that will occur adjoining any property that has a residential use on it. We actually provided, or what the staff did, staff did is created a map and sent that map along with a letter to ensure that the owner and the applicant under that use permit understood what was being requested and required of them, and they did agree to, again, maintain the 300-foot setback and provide the landscape buffer from any property adjoining the Wildwood acre project that has a residential dwelling on it. So, in terms of the setback and landscaping, those two things will occur, they'll have to. Now, one part of this is timing. Generally, the way the county requires landscaping to be installed is we require that to be in place prior to the CO being issued, so I don't know of anything that would require the landscaping, in terms of the UDO, that would require the landscaping to be installed immediately. However, before the project receives a CO, that landscaping will have to be in place.
What's a C E O?
See, a certificate of occupancy, or certificate of compliance, so before they're able to power the solar panels, that...
The county's requirement is very...
That's, that's right. So during construction, we, the county typically does not require landscaping to be installed. I think to do that, it would require some sort of condition of approval on the use permit. The other thing I'll note in terms of the berm, one discussion that I've had with, with the applicant, and I certainly, my experience has been that typically landscaping that's planted on top of berms tends to have a hard time surviving, has a difficulty with water and maintenance, so I would suggest there's probably better landscape options to screen the project than putting a row of shrubs on top of a berm. But if the Board of Commissioners, the public wants to see a berm with the shrubs on top of it, we can certainly do that. But again, I think, given we have a little time on this project, it may be worth our while to explore a landscape buffer that actually achieves the intent, which is screening the project. So that's the discussion on, on the use of the berm. Hopefully, that gives some information to, to the public on that topic.
I just, I just remember the testimony, I believe, and then I could be mistaken, but I certainly thought that when we walked out of there, or voted for that thing that night, that was part of what they were offering was the berm to, to make sure, because we did have testimony from the neighborhoods about, you know, the, the, the site, site and this and that type of stuff, and, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and, and I, I don't live in the neighborhood, and so I don't have to look at it, but, so I, I will, I will give in to the, the neighborhood and what we can get worked out, I guess, I mean, but I do remember, I don't know how we, I don't know how we left out the, the berm thing, because that was a, to me, I thought it was a big, big selling point.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments from the commissioners?
I, I do have one other question. Ben, I, I've gotten multiple input on folks that are pointing out exactly what he refer, what he referred to relative to the lighting. It, and, and I understand why, because you can set a light tower in the middle of the project and shine it and not have to move it around, vice, put it on the perimeter or shine it to the interior. Don't we have some kind of, seems to me there is a light ordinance that precludes light leaving. I know, for example, with ball fields, that the stadium lighting is not allowed to leave the property that's associated with that. I, I would think, we have noise, you know, pollution, if you will, that this is a classic example of, of light pollution, that if we could address that, 'cause evidently, it's pretty, those lights are pretty bright.
Yeah, there, there is an exterior lighting ordinance in the UDO. Now, tip, I would say typically, it's probably intended for permanent lighting, but certainly that's something that we could, we could look at. I'll also say that the staff went out to the site and spoke with the superintendent last week. Our understanding is that they, they are gonna cease lighting and night work following December 31st. So hopefully, from this point forward, you won't see the lighting and the night work anymore. But certainly, we will investigate if that is gonna be the case, how the light ordinance may apply to that. Thank you.
Well, I mean, here we are, December 7th, I mean, January the 7th, has it stopped yet?
I lie to and swear to it, I'm not sure. I'm not positive.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'd like to make one comment, and, and exactly what Mr. Idlet said, the applicant came here, as a matter of fact, I got a phone call from people in ranchland because they were building berms out there.
That's right, me, too.
And, and wanted to know about the land excavating and everything, and I called Mr. Woody and was told that they could move a certain amount of land without a permit, and they were building the berm so they could take photographs to show us what they were gonna build around the project if we gave them the approval. Now, I will say that putting trees on top of a berm, that they're not gonna live, that's probably not something that's, that's, that's gonna live. I mean, you can make them do it, and they'll die, and you've, that's just not how we should do business. However, when I voted in favor of that project on that Monday night with a courtroom of people in here, I left under the same impression they did, that there was gonna be a berm with a 300-foot setback and a vegetative buffer. The applicant represented that as part of the approval. Now, just because someone didn't say that specifically in the approval doesn't make it not so. And, and I am one commissioner that hope and expect, and with a capital E-X, expect that they're gonna do what they said they were gonna do when they left here that Monday night way back in, was it May? Or some point when every one of us sitting up here approved that, every one of us left out of here, oh, you voted, you did not vote in favor.
That's correct.
But you left out of here with the expectation that that berm was gonna be there and the vegetation.
I will categorically state that the way it was presented, there was gonna be the berm, the vegetative buffer, and 300-foot easement.
That's right.
And, and, you know, for the public, you know, I, from what I have understood, and, and Mr. Woody could probably confirm or deny, but that 300-foot buffer also apparently evaporated once that meeting ended as well. And so, did, did they, did they honor the 300 feet?
It, it, they did not. There, there's a portion of the property where they began installing panels within 300 feet, which the county staff went out and told them to stop, and we basically said that has to come up by the end of January, and there's been no further installation within the 300 feet. But to answer your question, yes, initially, when they went out to work, they did install within the 300 feet, and we had to make a site visit.
And, and that's, that, and if, just to remind the folks, they stood up and said, we intend to be a good neighbor, we intend to be, you know, a blessing to this community, we're buying all our materials locally, I remember that. I remember we're hiring all locals to do the work, and, and, you know, all I can suggest for county and staff is that I've not seen a whole lot of being good neighbors and doing what they said they were gonna do. And so, I hope this gets past us, and they, they absolutely honor what they committed to do, but I'm not impressed to date, and they've not been at it for very long.
Well, I will go one step further. I would ask Mr. Woody if, in fact, they are not gonna honor what they told us they were gonna do to send us the process for permit revocation to us via email.
Think you need to go out there and look at the trees that they're knocking down, too, for a change.
A point, there's been several good points, starting with Commissioner O'Neill, and then followed up with Commissioner Beaumont. And it, it's brought up the point that when we have these special use hearings, and people come forward, and they swear an oath, and they make representations as to what they're going to do in order to induce us to, and then, in, on good faith, we have commissioners that rely on that, but somehow, it doesn't get included in the motion. Going forward, I will ask the county attorney to speak to how representations made under testimony by an applicant for conditions he will meet that are subsequently not contained in the motion. What are, what are the county's recourse, or what is the county recourse in those particular instances, such as this one that we've talked about tonight, and future ones that may come before us?
Well, I think the first thing, again, is to be critical, is to make sure that in a motion, all conditions are included that the board intends to place on the use. Absent that, I mean, I suppose there is some argument that can be made that indeed the applicant in this particular case presented under oath testimony of certain things that they intended to do. Of course, a better practice, again, would have been for, for those conditions to have been placed within the motion, and so it begs the question as to whether there might be some remedy the county could take to remind the applicant of their representations made during the course of the hearing under oath, and reliance that this board placed upon those representations. To a great extent, that has been done by staff so far, as we have received complaints about activity that is going on out at the site that seems to be contrary to the understanding this board had when it issued the permit, and those issues have been addressed several times by planning staff with the company to push them into the direction of doing that which they said under oath and represented to this board that they would do.
Does that answer, I, I guess it falls back that the best, best thing we can and should do is make sure our motions are crafted to include all of the conditions that we find pertinent and relevant to the matter before us.
And if they don't clear it up, then they don't get the CO.
Well, that was my question to Ike, is what are the remedies if they are not?
Well, I mean, I mean, there may be, really, the only remedy is, first of all, to, to encourage and persuade the, the permit holder to acknowledge and recognize the commitment they made to this board and to the community during the course of the hearing, and understand and recognize this board acting in good faith upon their representations issued them this permit. Again, that's, some of, some of which has been done to date to push them into doing that which they said they would do. The next possible remedy would probably, probably lead to a revocation proceeding, but as you understand, that would be a, a quasi-judicial proceeding before this board, basically for the applicant or permit holder to show cause why their, their permit should not be revoked. And, and I suspect that, that there would, this board would be looking at a, a, a reason to revoke would be based upon miss, mistake, or the applicant not complying with that which they committed during the course of their testimony to do.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're approving what they asked for, and in their case that they put on, as they were asking for what they were looking for, they put all these conditions in there themselves. I mean, that's how I see it, and it's, I'll just say for one, for me, it's mighty hard to sit here and we have a discussion about a, a special use permit, and, and Paul comes up with a, a addition, and, and Mike comes up with an addition, and, and here, I'm the person who's gonna make the, the motion, it's hard to keep all that stuff together. We need to have a process of some kind, in my opinion, to where we are inclusive and make sure that our motions are strong and includes all the different criteria that we want to, to have included. And if someone makes a motion that it's not, there ought to be a process of some kind where a staff person will speak up and say, wait a minute, you didn't include this, did you mean to include this, or whatever, so we get through with this stuff. I mean, this is one of numerous cases I can remember where something has bit us because a motion wasn't made particularly right. We've had classes on motions and, and everything else, but we need a check and balance there somewhere, is I think. I mean, I just, I'm not the brainiest person in the world, but that would certainly help me to ensure that when I made a motion, that I was inclusive of what the, the wants of the board were, to where we don't run into this stuff anymore. I'll just lay that out there for thought.
Okay, well, what we'll do, we're gonna close or move on with this matter, but what I would, what I would request is, and I'd meet with staff, or any, any interested commissioners can do so as well, and we can try to set forth some mechanism to make sure that we capture the relevant conditions that we either impose, or the applicant self-imposes relative to his inducement for the board to approve the application before us, so that we can properly include them in a motion, and that's the simplest and best way in order for us to avoid any future problems and not have to go through the, what appears to be drawn-out remedy process absent a proper motion.
I would just ask one last caveat. What's the purpose of having sworn testimony if it doesn't mean anything when they come and come forward? So, I mean, that just goes back to the basics of integrity and honesty, and I would submit lawfulness.
I wouldn't. That's why I followed up with the question with the county attorney, to see if that gave us leverage, legal leverage, in order to force compliance without having to go through revocations and hearings and, and the subsequent actions that Ike told us we would have to do absent a proper motion. But in any event, we'll have...
Can I, one other thing?
Sure.
Well, I guess, just the one last thing, the gentleman come out tonight to address this and bring it to us, I mean, Mr. O'Neil, he made a comment about moving forward if they don't do what they said they were gonna do to bring back, so that's our, there's, is that what we're gonna do then? I mean, to, to let this gentleman know what our plans are to look at things, is to, if they don't come in and address the issues that they had told us they were gonna do, well, then we're gonna look at revocation? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I consider their sworn testimony part of the permit.
I agree.
I, I have correspondence between the county and the applicant regarding the issue of the setbacks and, and the landscape berm, and they've agreed to do it, and I have that correspondence, and I'll share that with the board tomorrow morning, and if this gentleman will give me his contact information before he leaves, I can certainly share it with the community as well.
Thank you.
Now, one thing we've talked about is timing of the landscaping. I can certainly call the company this week and see if they would be amenable to begin the installation of the landscaping sooner than later. I can certainly ask that of the company.
I, I don't get in way of, of a better way of doing things if the neighborhood and, and the contractor can come up with something, and, and screening would end up to be a better way, that certainly, I, I could buy into that, but I mean, that's, it's discussions that I think that these folks that's got to live there, and, and maybe with your assistance, staff's assistance can, can get figured out.
Mr. Woody, I don't remember, is that a type C or D?
For the, for the text amendment we did, or for the Wildwood?
Wildwood.
The Wildwood was, the only thing we have on that was just a, a berm with landscaping on top of it, so it really isn't anything, 'cause at that point, there wasn't a landscape requirement, so...
Well, I can tell you, having seen the type C at, at Shawboro, you're not gonna miss much of the construction process with a type C landscape buffer, 'cause I believe it's the intent that within three years, that landscaping provides some obstruction of view, but if you'd like to see what C looks like, you just go down Shawboro Road, and you'll see what that C looks like.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing now, it seems that the applicant is trying to comply. We have written confirmation, so I don't know that we need to take an action now to bring it back before us in as much as it appears there's an attempt to comply. Would I get concurrence from the rest of the board on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving to four, forward, we're gonna move on to public hearing and action on resolution. creating the Backwoods Reserve Saddle Brook Water Service District. This is a matter that I was, that I've been apprised that there's a request to defer this, so I will make a motion to defer this item until February the first, 2016 regularly scheduled meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may say, it, it will be ready to go before you on the January 19th meeting. The issue related to advertisement, and that has now been done, such that it can appear on your January 19th agenda.
Okay, well, I will amend my motion then from the February 1st to the January, is it 19th?
Yes.
January 19th, 2016 regularly scheduled meeting of the Currituck County Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, new business. Consideration and action on ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Three of the Code of Ordinances to establish the Animal Services and Control Advisory Board. Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as directed by the board, there is before you tonight an ordinance that will create the Animal Services and Control Advisory Board. I, I'll walk you through that ordinance. First of all, on line 19 of the proposed ordinance will be Section 2-129, sets forth the authority for creating this advisory board, which is the same, same authority that you utilize every time you create an advisory board, which is your power and authority to organize county government. Getting into the meat of the ordinance, at line 20 will be section, on page one, Section 2-130 provides for the composition of the board. The board be comprised, is proposed to be comprised of seven members, plus a county commissioner who will be appointed by the Board of Commissioners to serve without a vote for a two-year term. That is consistent with the manner in which you appoint a commissioner to the Economic Development Advisory Board and the Fire and EMS Advisory Board. The composition of, of the membership will require each member to meet certain criteria of expertise, professionalism, or experience, particularly with relation to animal care, control, treatment, training. So, we, we provide that one member shall be the Animal Services and Control Director or designee, one member shall be a county animal control officer, one member shall have demonstrated experience in animal care or administration in a veterinary hospital environment, one member shall be a professional animal handler or trainer with recognized credential or certification, or other equivalent experience working with animals, one member shall be, have demonstrated experience researching and writing grants, and that, that was believed to be important, as you will see, one of the duties of this board will be to seek out and apply for grants to help enhance the programming of the Animal Services and Control Department. And then two members shall be from different commissioner districts, electoral districts who are actively engaged in animal welfare and/or advocacy at the time of their appointment. Going to page two of the proposed ordinance, line one, Section 2-131 provides for the appointment in terms of members. This, again, is consistent with the general provision in the County Code of Ordinances relative to appointment of persons to county boards. So first of all, members of this board will serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, and then we set forth for the initial board, terms of three appointees for a term of one year, and four appointees for a term of two years. Thereafter, all appointments will be for a term of two years. Going into Section 2-132 at line seven on page two, provides that board members shall be compensated as this board of commissioners provides in your fee schedule adopted annually by the Board of Commissioners. Going on to line 12 on page two would be Section 2-133, again, establishing, establishing that these members serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, and, and they are at will appointments and may be replaced at any time by the Board of Commissioners. Section 2-134 at line 15 on page two provides for the duties of this particular advisory board. There are five, four, I guess, specific proposed duties, and then one generally related to the, this board's authority to request the advisory board to do other things. But first of all, this, this particular advisory board will be asked to work with Animal Services Control Director to formulate and recommend to the Board of Commissioners projects and programs promoting, encouraging awareness of animal care services, responsibilities of pet ownership, and animal adoption programs. Some of the thinking is that, that in order to have some community outreach, this advisory board might be of some benefit and assistance to the county, and helping the public understand that there's more to just animals being brought to the animal shelter, but there, there are other things that can help with the promotion of general pet and animal welfare within the county that can prevent the need for an animal to ever end up at the county's animal shelter. Secondly, this board will be, would make recommendations to this board of commissioners pertaining to the prevention of injury too, and the inhumane treatment of animals in the community that could be remedied by modification to existing county ordinances or adoption of new county ordinances. Third, that this board would monitor trends involving changes in animal population, demands for services, and licensing activities, and report those, their findings to this board of commissioners. Again, trying to keep a, a, a hand on the pulse of, of animal welfare, and what is going on with the animal population within the county, and keeping this board of commissioners abreast of any trends that may be noticed that require some type of governmental action or intervention, or otherwise governmental support for community involvement and solution. Number four, in coordination with the county's, county's Public Information Officer, prepare and coordinate a countywide public information program to inform county residents about services provided by the Animal Services and Control Department, and promote the general safety and welfare of animals. So again, the county and this advisory board in particular taking an initiative to help facilitate educational programming and communication to the public. And then fourth, research, identify, prepare, and coordinate applications for grants, fundraising efforts, and donations for the enhancement of services.
Yeah.
Well, indeed it is. It's misnumbered, but it's the fifth. But, but, but to identify and apply for grants that will enhance the, the, the programs and services that are provided by the Animal Services and Control Department, including spay and neuter programs and vaccination programs, as well as the adoption and general welfare of animals within the county. Going on to Section 2-135 at line 36 on page two, again, establishes that this board is simply or merely an advisory board, not to say that it's not important, but its role, much like the planning board and other advisory boards that you've created, is to advise this board of county commissioners not to operate, run, or oversee a county agency or department. On page three, Section 2-136, officers, the Animal Services and Control Advisory Board will have the authority, as other boards do, to name their chair and any other officers they may deem appropriate for their function. And then lastly, in a proposed Section 2-137, just provides that, that as with other boards in the, in the County Code of Ordinances, they shall meet quarterly, at times fixed by the board, and special meetings may be called, may be held by, upon call of the chairman upon 48 hours' advance notice, and then, of course, they, they must comply with the open meetings law, like any other public body. That is the proposed ordinance creating this advisory board. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Just have, I assume, Mr. Attorney, that this come from looking at other municipalities and counties, and how they have their advisory boards put together?
Yes, we did, we did a review of a number of different ordinances within North Carolina and, and other states. It's interesting that a lot, one of the focuses of advisory boards in, in other communities within North Carolina and other states also has to do with this board acting as the board that makes determinations, determinations relative to dangerous dog designations, and enforcement of those designations. We, however, have given that authority to the regional health department, so there would be no need for this board to, to do that. So again, we were trying to look at ways in which this advisory board might, as I said a moment ago, help educate the public, help bring the public into the process, help the public become part of taking responsibility for pet ownership and for animals within the county, so that we can avoid animals from even having to become part of the animal shelter population.
It's a prevention worth a pound of cure.
That, that, that's the thought and idea. Other county staff had some, had some good input and insight on, on this draft as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that motion.
If I could decide, say one thing before we vote on that. I've had time to see this, and I would like to take and ask, at the moment that we, it's been presented, I would like to have it tabled until January 19th, but go ahead with your motion, but I'm asking for that leeway time. I think we're moving a little fast.
Couple meetings ago, Mr. Hall, you were telling us we weren't moving fast enough.
Yes, sir, and there are some things in here that I'd like to review a little bit further and talk with, that we're in here, that's all I'm asking, is until the January 19th.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. We have had long discussions tonight about bringing motions forward, bringing decisions. Mr. McCree, this is your legal recommendation establishing the animal control services.
Well, it, it certainly presents to you a, a lawful ordinance for your adoption, and this is staff's recommendation to you at this time, yes.
Okay, and since it is a new formed citizen advisory board, we can make changes as nee, as deemed necessary.
You may always amend your ordinances, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, so if this gets approved tonight, then what I'm hearing is then, if something comes up a month later, then it can be amended?
Right, certainly.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion and a second before us. A motion from Commissioner O'Neill, and a second from-
Gilbert.
Commissioner Gilbert. And, App, I'm sorry, do you have another?
Well, I was, I was just gonna say, from talking to folks in the community that have been involved with the animals, and based on Commissioner Hall saying we were moving too slow, is why I made my motion tonight to move this forward.
I guess I was a little, I was a little bit surprised by the makeup of the board, and I wanted a chance to discuss that with fellow commissioners and citizens before it was approved.
Well, we have a motion and a second before us, and as constituted, we also have clarification that if we need subsequent changes to and or tweaking, we can do that subsequent, but we, again, we have a motion and a second before us. I will ask all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one opposed, and the rest of the board, rise.
Then, then I must tell you that this will have to be placed on your January 19th agenda, because an ordinance must, at its first reading, must be adopted by unanimous vote, or it must come back for a second reading, at which time-
Very good.
-it may pass by a simple majority.
Okay, so, in, in essence, Commissioner Hall, we're, 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 in essence, complying to, to your request for, to review it, and if you have any comments, and then we'll subsequently have to vote on this on the January 19th meeting. All right. Next matter before us will be board appointments. The first one up is Senior Citizens Advisory Board, I believe. That is Ms. Gilbert's.
Um, yes, for the senior citizens board, I would like to appoint George Rhine.
George Rhine.
He's gonna, he's gonna replace Mr. Bell, who resigned to sit on, be appointed on another board.
Okay, and do we need-
I'm gonna reappoint Ms. Joanne DeBello, so you can do them both at the same time, if you'd like.
Is that for the library board?
Senior citizens.
Senior citizens, gotcha. All right. Do we need a motion for that?
I make a motion that we accept the two nominations, or appointments.
Do we have a second? I'll second that.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously, unanimously. The next board appointment is to the lib, excuse me, Library Board of Trustees.
Who has those?
I'm looking right now.
Library is mine, again.
Is again Commissioner Gilbert's.
And I would like to appoint Stacy Vescorella, and I have a, every time I pronounce her last name, I, I just slaughter it, so I apologize, Stacy, but I want to, um, go ahead, and she has an application on file, and I'd like to go ahead and appoint her to the library board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, next before us is the planning board. I believe that is Commissioner O'Neill's.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my person that I had set to appoint has changed her mind, so I will have someone at the next meeting.
All right, we will set that aside till the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I also have an, an appointment for the planning board, and I would like to reappoint Carol Bell.
Second.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It passes unanimously. All right, is that, that finishes the planning board. The next up is economic development.
I, I spoke with Mr. Roger Lambertson, and he would like very much to be reappointed to the economic development board. That's one of the consensus appointments.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, unanimously. Mr. Lambertson is reappointed. All right, then next, we have recreation advisory, and that is Commissioner Idletz.
Ryan Hodges.
Oh, I just, I just lost.
Mrs. Hodges, yeah, son.
I don't know where it went.
That's, that's good. I'd like to reappoint Mrs. Ryan Hodges from Knights Island.
All right, do we have a second?
Well, I, I've got an appointment, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reappoint Robin Kane from District Three.
Aye.
And I do not have an appointment at this time, so I'd like for Charles Pickle, at least Pickrel, to go ahead and serve on the January board meeting, and then I should have an appointment for the recreation board.
I think he will serve until such time as he is replaced.
Correct. Thank you.
I have one that, of course, I have to replace him, which has changed the mind, so I need to continue mine.
All right, that being said, we have two to move forward. Do I have a motion to accept those two?
So maybe.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, unanimously accepted. All right, I think that concludes the appointments. Next we have, is that correct? Next we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have one correction to the Board of Commissioners' meetings. During the public comment, Mr. Frank Flora made the comment that he had lived here for 80 years, and that just needs to be corrected. It's listed as John Flora, and it should be Frank Flora.
So noted, could the minutes be corrected to reflect that?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, too, on these, on, I think on the board appointments? I believe I have to appoint to the Board of Adjustments. Do I not make an appointment to that?
You can, if you're-
I mean, no, I, I do have that one that I have to take care of correct, okay. I do have somebody, I probably will have that ready for the next meeting then.
Okay.
Very good. All right, is that, functionally, all we need to do is note the correction that needs to be made in the minutes for that to happen?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction as noted by Commissioner Gilbert.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously. Next is Commissioner's Report. I will start with Commissioner Beaumont.
If I could interrupt, I have one more item that I'd, I'd like to put before the board for consideration.
Absolutely.
And, and that is, in, in talking to some of our state representatives, relative to the, specifically solar, but amongst other things, you know, solar enjoys, solar power enjoys a 20% downrated taxation on the equipment that's installed in the ground, and I'd like to ask that, for consideration, that staff put together a resolution asking for our state representative- a resolution asking for our state representatives to reconsider that advantageous, uh, tax benefit. And in fact, would like to see them, uh, pay the taxes that every other industry basically in the county gets to pay, and that's 100% of, uh, uh, the property tax value.
Is it, is it correct that the state is entertaining such
That is correct.
thoughts at this time?
And the specific request was if that's something that Currituck County was interested in helping support, that they would appreciate, um, something to that effect.
All right, well, I mean, we have discussed in the past, and it escapes me right now, but the sums that are involved relative to the 80% deferral of property tax on equipment out at sites that we already have in the county would equate to a significant, uh, sum of money, rather large. And I think it's proper to, to note that it's being treated separate and apart from any other business that we have here in Currituck County. So, with that being said, I, I would support Commissioner Beaumont, and that would be in the form, I guess, of a resolution that we would ask staff to, to, uh, prepare for us to act on at the next meeting. Would that, is that's correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion?
I think, um, for the public out there, it, it may be a little confusing what we're talking about, but the federal government subsidizes alternative energies pretty heavily. The state of North Carolina was subsidizing them very heavily up until December 31st of this year. Um,
They actually suspended it, I think in June is when the state's subsidize, subsidization ended.
But anyways, the state did not repeal the county subsidization. So in other words, for, um, the guy that's out here running his business on his equipment, he's paying dollar for dollar on taxes, and the solar were paying 20 cent on the dollar. So what this would do is bring equity to everyone involved. Is, is that correct, Mr. Beaumont?
It's correct. It, one way of looking at it, and in discussions, I, I just find it ironic that the state of North Carolina, in their infinite wisdom, stepped back from the expenditures that they were seeing, uh, in, in help subsidizing, uh, alternative energy, specifically solar in this case, and yet the counties are forced to continue to subsidize that same development. So, we're just asking that they treat us just like they're treating the state coffers.
Well, I, I would just note, and it's anecdotal, we had testimony, I think, in the same matter. It, it was a use permit where I believe I made the comment that it, if it, I think I made the comment or question as to the viability or competitiveness of, in this case, solar power with existing power sources. And it was my understanding that the federal government has, and so did the state of North Carolina, subsidize alternative energy sources because at the time they were not viable or could not compete on their own. So, as a business, they were, could not survive without the government heavily subsidizing them. Now, whether or not that's a proper role for government is a subject for another discussion. However, we had testimony that was given to us when I proffered that question, and we were told by their, I'm not sure was he the engineer, but he told us that now solar power is competitive with, per kilowatt hour, other more traditional forms of, of energy. And I, I can only take his, his word for that, and if, if that's in fact true, then it would seem not an equitable treatment of other businesses to set one aside and give it a disparate advantage of 80% deferral of their taxes. Now, that's, that's my opinion, so, but that's just a follow-up.
And there's one other thing that I'd like to, to bring out, and in, and in that same discussion that we had, you know, I asked the question, does that mean everybody's electrical, electricity rates are gonna go down because of how much electricity is being produced local? I've subsequently learned that the reality is, based upon the infrastructure that needs to be done in order to support solar power collection, uh, the vast majority and, and I, the, the exact statistic escapes me right now, but we can expect our electrical bills to actually go up by 3.6% directly attributable to the fact that we're, that we have solar in our communities. So, I think it's only fitting that, that if we're able to garner some, uh, tax or increased tax benefit, that that by, by, you know, may be considered to be used to offset, uh, from a taxation perspective, our constituents by, uh, the increase in their electrical bills.
Okay, any other comment?
Do we need a vote on this? I mean, I think you made the motion, correct?
If that's a motion, so be it.
If, I mean.
Uh, Mr. Scanlon, do we need a motion to direct staff to prepare?
It's not necessary. We'll, we'll bring back a resolution at the next meeting, and you have a resolution itself to vote upon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now moving to commissioner's report.
With that said, I was, uh, very pleased to be able to attend the, uh, the, uh, open house at our, uh, brand-new animal shelter. And, uh, you know, I, I can, I can tell you that, uh, when things go well, sometimes they go pretty well. And, uh, that is one of the finest animal facilities that I've ever had the opportunity to visit. Um, you know, on one hand, I'm, I'm grateful that we, that our residents have the benefit of such a facility. On the other hand, I'm concerned that others in other counties will bring their animals over to, uh, our facility, uh, because of the deluxe accommodations. But, uh, my, uh, my, kudos to the staff and kudos to, uh, uh, the commissioners at the time because it is a top-notch facility. And if you haven't seen it, I would strongly encourage , uh, the residents of Currituck County to go by and look at it, 'cause I, I believe it was a job well done. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
The holiday season is now somewhat behind us. I just want to remind people to still watch out for our seniors, our citizens that are less fortunate, our animals. Now is not the time to stop taking care of those extra things or giving the extra that you can. If you can, folks, watch out for everybody in the county. It would make a greater place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashad?
I don't have anything to report. I just, I have a question. Just, when we were talking about the, the, the animal board while ago, uh, and I know there's, there's a lot of boards to where we give them a, 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 a little stipend of some sort for gas or for whatever, gas money. Well, it, it just kinda hit me. Here we are, we're embarking on, I'd like to know what the distinction is on what boards gets that and what boards don't get that. I mean, here we are, we're embarking on one of the most supportive things in our county, the new land use plan. And we have, you know, we have a, a committee of folks that's gonna be doing a lot of running, a whole lot of work over probably an 18-year period. It's, it's not gonna get anything. And it just, there's something about that, they just don't seem, you know, and some of them are gonna be traveling distances and, and, and I mean, you know, to me, it would be, you, you get in, you get out of something what you put into it. It'd be wise to, to have something set up to where we could do the same type of thing for, for those folks. I'm just throwing that out there as a thought. It just, it hit me just a while ago, and I said, why, why don't we do it for, for those types of committees as well? And there, there may, may well be a reason that we don't. Dan, is there? I mean, or is it just, is there any guidelines as to what?
Historically, you have paid your advisory boards that are appointed by the board of commissioners that are standing and have a, uh, a, a term or existence into the future.
Okay.
Committees that have had a finite, specific charge, uh, and once that charge was completed, their work was done. Uh, we've generally looked at those as volunteer in nature, and we, we have not paid them. Um, but that is a unwritten policy of this board. You certainly have the authority and ability, if you want to compensate the, uh, the land use plan committee, you, you certainly can, can, can do that.
I'd just throw it out there for thought, and, uh, you know, to, for, see what everybody else thinks. But, uh, and I understand, and you explained it, and, and that's fine, and I, I can, I can certainly buy into that. But, you know, it's, it's, the, the land use planning committee is gonna be a very important structured committee in this county that's gonna do some work, that's gonna kinda guide this county for some eight to 10 years in the future. So, anyhow, thank you.
And, and I, I don't disagree, Commissioner Idletz, but I would point out, we have the Wellhead Board that, since I've been serving as a commissioner, received no compensation. And, uh, but I bring that up, and I have brought up that maybe they should.
The Wellhead Board is a 501(c)(3). They would have to designate themselves some type of compensation, not by the board of commissioners.
I mean, well, they, they could, but they're appointed by commissioners for set terms, and based on case law are deemed a quasi-county organization. I, I take your point, but they're, they're not, that, their relationship isn't that cut and dry. They're not totally independent or separate because they receive the majority of their funding, and they're appointments from the county. I just bring that up, just because it hit me, that's all. All right, uh, Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes, sir. I, I'd like to share two things. Over the last month, we lost two, um, gentlemen that contributed greatly to this community in different capacities. In Shawboro, we lost Mr. Charles Wellens, who had been, I would say, kinda like the Billy Graham of Currituck County. He had, he had, uh, uh, served the residents of Shawboro for many years, and he was in, at Coin Jock for 15 years, where I'm a member of. And he was, he just touched a lot of people in this community for a lot of years, and, and we need to remember him. Also, we lost, uh, before Christmas, Commissioner, former Commissioner Eldon Miller, who served the folks of Moayok for, I believe, three terms or 12 years. And, um, I can tell you, Mr. Miller did his homework. He was ready when he came to the meeting, and he put a lot of thought. He had a satellite office there in Moayok where he, uh, uh, people would come to visit him and, and, uh, worked very diligently on behalf of the county. And, and I'd just like to, uh, um, say that a lot of these buildings that we're discussing and, and the schools, the recreation, a lot of that started back in the time when Mr. Miller was on the board, and he was very instrumental to get in the county to start looking forward into, um, a building program and, and using the pay-as-you-go formula so that Currituck County essentially, um, paid for our buildings. We set it aside, and then we'd spend the capital funds and, and did not put a burden and a, an additional debt on the citizens. But one of the things that Mr. Miller was, was always big in was, was children. He loved children and, and recreation. And, and we have pretty much, um, built community parks in, in just about every community in this county except Moayok. And we've talked about it for years and years, and it's always a topic of every retreat we have every year. I think it's on there again this year. But I would like for the county this year to identify that piece of property, whether it's an existing piece of property, whether it's a new piece of property, but identify the piece of property where this county is gonna provide a park for the citizens in, in, in Moayok. And, and I can tell you, we have partners that are willing to partner with this. Um, the Southampton Roads YMCA, which, which I'm a member of that board, is willing to partner with us. They're not gonna build a YMCA like we have at Maple, but they're willing to partner with us. They've put, we've put money in our budget for planning for a facility, uh, in, in Currituck, which would be in Moayok. So, I would just implore the, that this board this year, make that, uh, something that we, we actually make happen to, to secure the property and start the planning process. And Mr. Scanlon is, um, um, prepared to do that. He just needs a firm answer from the board that this is a priority. And, and it was always a priority with, with, uh, Mr. Miller, the recreation in this county. And, and he represented Moayok all those years, and forego Moayok to make sure we, I would push for Lower Currituck, and he would help with Lower Currituck or, or the Coin Jock area, and the different areas where we have parks. So, I would just implore this board this year to make that a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, I totally agree, Mr. O'Neill. But Scanlon, are we not working on some sites? I had that conversation with you, I think, a week or so ago. Are we not?
Yes, sir. If you, if you recall at your retreat last year, um, staff had brought to you a, a handful of parcels for your consideration. Uh, you prioritized, I think, two or three. Staff has been working with the owners of that property to see if, uh, in fact, we can come to a, uh, a, a, an agreeable acquisition price. Uh, the preferred parcel, the owners at this time are not prepared to sell. Um, so we are moving down that list and looking at other options. And I believe, uh, in the last month, maybe some additional parcels have been brought to our attention. But we, we have been working with landowners, uh, trying to find, um, a, first of all, a willing seller, and certainly willing seller, seller at, at a price that the, the board can move forward with. So, we have been working on it.
And, and the other thing I would add is, is I believe this year in our budget, we actually began setting money aside for that park. Is, that's still correct?
We, we have, we haven't set aside, we have, we have not set aside money out of our budget, but as, as Commissioner O'Neill had said, the, there has been money set aside for doing the master plan on a site that has been done from the, South Hampton Roads YMCA. So, uh, money has been put on the table to do the master plan.
Right.
I, I agree with Paul. I think this year, we need to, we need to identify something to where we can move forward. I agree.
And one last thing, Mr. Chairman. Since I've announced that I am not seeking reelection to the at-large seat, I've received numerous phone calls, um, some disappointed, and there's been a few that have been delighted. But I would just like to, uh, uh, thank everyone that has offered, uh, comments to me favorable and, and very kind, and, uh, just reiterate again, this is the best place that I could ever imagine to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Payment?
Just real quick, uh, the, the couple, uh, individuals that Chairman O'Neill mentioned, I was gonna make some comments, but he spoke already. But, uh, just, you know, Mr. Wellens did, he had brought a lot to this community. And his wife, you know, was a school teacher for many years as well. She was a big part of our community. I know Paul probably had her, I had her. Um, Mrs. Wellens is, is, is a dear lady as well, and, and, you know, they've just, up in the Moayok area, you can't, I think, uh, Mr. Miller, too, is also known as Papa.
Pa.
Pop, excuse me. That was, yeah, so, um, you get a lot of people, I'd go in there and hear them call where Pop's at. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we did recognize them. And there's a lot of people in our community, um, you know, as Commissioner Hall had said, you know, we've still got a lot of people. There's a lot of cancer going on. There's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, um, stuff out there you can go to and help these individuals. Just keep that in mind going through as we go through 2016. And, uh, I believe we still are having the ribbon cutting on the 19th
Yes, sir.
of January 4th. So, I, anybody can come out to that as well for the animal shelter. Um, again, I was impressed with that. It, it was built to be expandable if the need ever happened. So, if individuals happen to bring their animals over from other areas, Commissioner Beaumont, and I hope that doesn't happen, but, um, other than that, um, I just, you know, wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. Um, we've got a lot going on this year as a board. I look forward to working with this board this year, um, accomplish some good things for the county, make some good decisions to move this county in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilbert?
Um, I just wanna concur, um, and echo about the animal shelter. I, too, was there, and I have to do a shout-out to, um, our engineer, Eric Weatherly, for being there. We had a couple hiccups, and he was there to save the day. So, between he and Commissioner Payment, um, they, they got their heads together and, and got that straightened out. So, thank you, Mr. Weatherly. Um, I, too, wanna echo and concur with, um, Commissioner O'Neill on Pop Miller. Um, prior to me being elected a commissioner, I was summoned to Pop Miller's, um, satellite office in Moayok, um, which he was still conducting business out of. Um, and he gave me a lot of insights and expectations, um, if and when I was elected. And then after I was elected, I was summoned back to his office in Moayok and, um, told what I needed to do. Um, and, um, a park was number one item on his list, and I just, I'm remiss, um, for not mentioning that. Um, and I, I did And I did talk to Eldon III and Kim, that we didn't get that opportunity to make that come to fruition before his passing. But I made him promise that, you know, before I left this earth, that we would have a park in Moyoc. So unless somebody knows something that I don't know, we need to move forward and make that a priority in his honor. The other thing is, is it is the new year, everybody is starting their resolutions, and I would just echo what you need to do is say what you said you were going to do. Because I said I would, that's what I want everybody to do. And with New Year's resolutions, the number one thing is to get fit and get in shape. So the Moyoc Women's Club on January 23rd is having our first event. This is to raise money for our scholarship funds for students and women that want to go back to school. So if you're a female and you're out of the college, or you want to go back to school, there's opportunities for scholarships there. So the Frosty Toes 5K will be on January 23rd, and we will start at the Maple Park. And with the airport road being closed, we're going to have to redo the track a little bit. But you can park at the COA. The event starts at nine o'clock. You can contact Amy Ennis at Ennis &amp; Ennis, or Joanne Brumsey, or myself, or any of the members of Moyoc Women. But it will be rain, shine, sleet, or snow. So it will be on January 23rd, and then the race starts at nine o'clock.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo some of the previous comments. During my tenure on the board, I, with another commissioner and the county manager, got to tour some of the regional animal shelters. And I will tell you, what we have done, and when I say we, the people of this county, what we have done is by and far a standout, and it's something for us to be proud. That being said, if you haven't been out, and when you do go out, I would tell you, when you're touring the facility, make no mistake, it just didn't happen. It was a tremendous amount of work, and I don't have the time here or the memory to give everybody that deserves the credit. But staff did a tremendous amount of work. I know we had the county manager, I mean, Worth, I mean, Lee, I mean, it was, it was a team effort, and it was with the support of the commissioners and the people of this county. So when you go out, it just didn't happen. These things are intense labors. A facility of that size and scope is a Herculean task, if you will, to have it all come together. And for that, I think there's a lot of credit that can be extended, and to the community for their support.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind the board that your next meeting, two weeks from tonight, Monday night, is Martin Luther King's, and so that is a holiday. So your meeting will be on Tuesday, the 19th, as was mentioned by Commissioner Payment. Prior to that meeting, we will be on-site at the shelter for the ribbon cutting and dedication. We are running slightly ahead of schedule, and we were thinking we would be able to fully move into the building next week, but I understand now that there's a strong possibility by the end of this week, the animals will actually be moved into the building and will be fully functioning. So at the dedication, the building will be operating in a normal fashion. We have been advertising for some time now that the, well, once the animals are moved over, that we will move forward immediately with shutting down Airport Road so that the airport project can get underway. We've been advertising that effort, and there's a message board on Airport Road. January 11th, that road will be no longer open. We've tried our best to contact all of the folks that go to the transfer station on a regular basis, the companies and the haulers, to understand that they have a different route. But on January 11th or immediately thereafter, that road will be barricaded and will no longer be open for the public.
What time is the ribbon cutting?
It is, we are scheduling right now, it's either 3:00 or 3:30. I think it's 3:30?
3:30.
3:30.
Next item will be public comment. Now, I do not have anyone signed up at this time. Is there anyone here that would wish to address the board? Yes, ma'am? If you would, you name an address.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Marsinko. I'm on the Board of Ocean Sands and Crown Point Property Owners Association. And the reason I'm attending the meeting is because I saw the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board was on the agenda. And as a board member, I just have a few questions for the board. And I submitted a paper. I don't know if y'all, I don't expect answers tonight, but I would just like to, you know, leave the questions with you all.
All right.
That's next on the agenda, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be a special. And you, I'm sorry, you did indicate that you had submitted those questions?
I had turned them in.
Is this it?
Yeah, at the beginning of the meeting. Yeah.
It starts off, what law firm is we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, upon conclusion of public comment, we're going to recess this meeting and convene a meeting for the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District, if it's appropriate at that time. We'll have County Manager speak, or Mr. McCree speak to that. If not, we will put together some response and see that you get it.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Do you have them? They might want to send them down. We don't have the questions.
Okay. And I don't want to put you on the spot if it's premature, you know, if you need to review the questions so that you can have an appropriate and complete response, that'll be sufficient as well. Is there anyone else?
I note that this actually is a request from Coastland Corporation, which is the plaintiff in the lawsuit that we will be discussing in a few minutes. So I think I'll suggest that it'd probably be best that we respond deliberatively and in writing to these questions. This does not appear to be any kind of question from the property.
I did, I have not reviewed that, so it would appear it's almost like a deposition or, okay.
Ms. Flora.
Ms. Flora.
My name is Doris Flora, and I live at 43rd Carrottock Highway in Moyoc. And I would like to thank Mr. O'Neil for his gracious acknowledgement of something maybe happening in Moyoc for a change. I read all the papers, and I see where everybody's got all the glorious parks, and they're getting new stuff put into it. And I worked on the small area planning for 18 months, never missed a meeting. I was at all the meetings. And I hopefully had hoped that we would get something going from Moyoc. All we're getting is rooftops, and that's it. We would like for you to put some more rooftops down somewhere else. But appreciate very much your comment, Mr. O'Neil, and those of you that are thinking to make Moyoc happen and have something. Everybody else has got, it's their turn. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. All right. Anyone else that wishes to speak at public comment? If not, I would like to recess the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and call to order the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board Special Meeting, and I will defer to Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As I speak to you in this capacity and say you in this board, I'm referring to you as you sit as a governing board for Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District exists under the general statutes as a separate and independent political subdivision of the state of North Carolina. But again, by law, you serve as the governing board for that district. A little bit of background history, as you know, early last year, Coastland Corporation, which is a party to a settlement agreement with the county from litigation that occurred back in the 1980s, and for 30-some years has been claiming continually that the county is violating that settlement agreement, which is an erroneous claim, filed an arbitration demand and filed a lawsuit against the county seeking monetary damages for areas of the settlement agreement, and which, say again, erroneously claimed that the county is violating the settlement agreement. Several months after filing those demands for arbitration and the complaint against the county, they then dismissed both of those matters. However, as we began to review the issues, I think we made a determination from the county side of things that it is time, once and for all, for these issues to be resolved going forward. So the county filed a demand for arbitration to resolve, again, once and for all, any claims that Coastland believes it has, and any breach of the settlement agreement Coastland believes has occurred. In response to that, Coastland filed another lawsuit against Currituck County, seeking, again, monetary damages among other things for, again, what are erroneous claims. It's important to understand that the relationship also between the county and this board, this entity, Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. And as part of the settlement agreement with Coastland, the county agreed to create a water and sewer district in order to plan, provide for the planning, the financing, the maintenance, and operation of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District utilities, that being water and sewer systems. The county did that. The Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District subsequently, in the late 1980s, actually issued general obligation bonds in the amount of $2-plus million in order to pay for the construction of certain utility facilities within Ocean Sands. On May 6th of 2002, the county and Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District also entered into an agreement whereby the Water and Sewer District agreed to accept responsibility and obligations for ownership, operation, and maintenance of water system infrastructure, including the outfall pipe and freshwater shallow water wells that are subject to the litigation that's been filed by Coastland Corporation against the county. Pursuant to that agreement, the county is not the true or real party in interest. And so it's become evident and clear that Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District needs to be a party to this arbitration and the litigation in order that the Water and Sewer District's issues be defended, and the Water and Sewer District have an opportunity to establish, once and for all, that claims of settlement agreement breached by Coastland Corporation are erroneous and should end. To that end, this body, the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District, has retained Attorney Jim Shank from Raleigh, North Carolina, with the law firm of Connor, Gwynn, and Shank, to represent it. The county, in the litigation, has filed motions asking the court to add as a defendant in the lawsuit for the opportunity to fully participate and defend itself in any actions it may have taken, the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. That motion hearing is scheduled for January 25th in Dare County Superior Court. Mr. Shank believes it's important for this board, however, to at least take an action to formally authorize him, at his recommendation, for the Water and Sewer District to join the lawsuit as a defendant with the county in order to preserve its rights and present its case, as well as to join in the arbitration. And so what you're being asked to do tonight is to, by motion, authorize counsel for the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District to consent to both joinder and of the Water and Sewer District in the litigation and in the arbitration matter. And so a simple majority, a simple motion and vote would be all that's required of you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
By not doing so would render us at someone else's mercy, is that correct?
That's correct. So that, among other things, there is not some decision that may be made, or some judgment that may be entered, that affects the rights and obligations of this body, the Water and Sewer District, without having had the opportunity to participate and fully defend claims that are made and that really are made against the Water and Sewer District, as opposed to the county.
What's, Mr. Scanlon, what's the support of the board, the Water and Sewer Board for this to happen? Or is that something that's not been discussed with them, or?
The advisory board is aware that the district is seeking counsel. I don't know if they've taken a formal position or action on that.
And going back in time, this has been an ongoing issue for a number of years in one form or another. But the bottom line is, this board of commissioners are the acting voting members that represent the Water and Sewer District. So the decision that we make is the one that would be binding and go forward and protect the interest, not just us as the Water and Sewer, but the residents as well that are members of the Water and Sewer District also. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
So in effect, what it does is preserve their right through us to have a say in the outcome, or to defend our rights at any hearing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That would lead to an I.S.A. question, to see. You would think if they, if we were doing it in that perspective, would there be, if somebody would have been support there, I'm just curious.
Well, any other comments, question?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make a motion that we approve having this council represent the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer Board in this matter.
And specifically to consent to the Water and Sewer District's joinder in the lawsuit and arbitration.
Yes, add that to the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Payment, seconded by Commissioner.
Gilbert, I'm still Gilbert.
Gilbert, it's getting late still. And, or concurrent with, oh, yeah. A third. All right, we have a motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, or actually adjourn the meeting of the Ocean Sands Water. Is there any other matters to be brought for us?
No, sir.
All right. I'd like to adjourn the meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. Does that need to be done by motion?
No, you have the authority to adjourn the meeting, as chair.
And I will adjourn the meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District, reconvene the meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, and we'll accept the motion to enter closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board entering closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.1183 to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to receive advice from the county attorney regarding a claim against the county with the following pending lawsuits, Swan Beach Corolla versus Currituck County.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Unanimous.
All right.